Is here. Oh, it's here.
They're all here.
Well, we gotta wait, because nobody's here.
I don't think you can name more public.
Wow.
I'm not even ready. What the heck?
What the heck?
We got nine o'clock.
Right.
I like that.
Let's go. We got nine o'clock.
We're all fine.
And to the Republic for six seconds, one nation, under God, in the visible. Roll call.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltie here. Brenda Simmons.
Yeah.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Commissioners, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Go down when I'm getting there.
It's okay.
So I have none. I have none.
Any changes to the agenda?
Yeah.
You have some?
Whatever that one is.
Um, has to do with meetings.
Oh, well, we can change that when we get there. We can talk about that when we get there. Is there, do you want to do any changes? Commissioner Simmons, do you have any additions or questions?
No, right now.
Uh.
Don't make a motion to accept the, uh, or the, um, please end up as presented.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott. Any support?
I support.
Port. From Commissioner Wiltie. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. Are there any commissioners? Item, item four Review of Minutes, December twenty eight, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes.
Minutes on the motion of. Accept the mess.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott?
Support that.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any further discussion?
Hate this damn thing.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes, yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item four B, January fourth, twenty twenty-four, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Minutes. I'll make a motion to accept the mess presented.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott? Support. Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item five, Public Comment on Agenda Item Matters. Any public comment in the room?
No, not today.
Any public comment on the phone? Correspondence or recent correspondence, um, from a Sabal Bailey Community Mental Health came to the January twenty twenty, twenty twenty-second meeting notice that has been received and filed. Item seven, Election of Vice Chair. Um. Organization matters election of a vice chair. The chairperson will call for nominations for the office of vice chairperson when the nominations are closed by majority vote or no other nominations are forthcoming. The chairperson will order the role, the role of commissioners to be called. When one nominee receives three votes of the members elected and serving, the nominee will be declared the vice chairperson. Unlike election of the chairperson, there's no provisions for a secret ballot for vice chairperson. The vice chairperson is elected annually for one year term. Floor is open for nominations. I guess I didn't realize that the vice chairperson was.
It's only when you hear you. I nominate me. No one's ever, no one else is speaking up.
I support. I'll support that.
I will as well. You have a, uh.
Two, two seconds.
We have a nomination, uh, for Commissioner Simmons. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Do we still have to do a?
Uh. Do a roll call.
Okay. Since there's no other nominations, roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yeah.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eight, Consent, uh, Agenda. Um, I think we'll take these. Individuals.
Want to take them all.
Yeah. Uh, item eight, a resolution to approve calendar year twenty twenty-four meeting schedule. Um, we have to, we have a, you'll make a motion, Commissioner Simmons. I'll support it. Further discussion? Go ahead.
Huh? Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I supported it.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion on this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um. I would like to see that all of our meetings are held at five thirty in the evening rather than morning, because it's like sometimes I even get confused about, is this the morning or is this the afternoon meeting? And so even though I have it on my calendar, I do look at my calendar now. But I even get my other meetings mixed up too, so. I love that. So on the wrong Wednesday. So, but I would like to see it just evening meetings.
Yeah, I think this was talked about. It's more conducive to my schedule. Um, I think Commissioner Mayhew agreed with that as well, but, but we didn't feel we had the support at that time. So I guess what is, what has changed from last week to this week?
What do you mean?
Like thoughts on this? Because we talked about this at Committee of the Whole. The evening meetings work for me as well. I, I work, I work four ten, so I have to take a half a day of vacation to be here. Two days a month. Um, they work for me as well, but it's what we've done, so. What's changed with your thought process from last week to this week?
I guess I didn't realize that this was being talked about as far as being, being, uh, uh, approved for this week. It was discussed. But there was no decision really made. I didn't think. I could be wrong.
Okay. Thoughts, Commissioners?
Um. I also do a lot of work. I'm a very busy person. A lot of different jobs and businesses I run. And going into this, you know, I did my homework and I came to meetings and I knew that, you know, half four in the morning and half four at night. And I do respect the fact that everybody, you know, is working and has commitments, but we knew what we were getting into. And I know we don't get a ton of people come to our meetings. We don't get a lot of people on Zoom, but if it's a matter of importance, you know, people do show up. I think the fact that morning meetings, you know, we have stakeholders here that are closer. We have employees that are here. I, I just like the way it's set up. I think it's a good all around, you know, can kind of service everyone, one way or the other. Um, and I think it's good to have the mornings and evenings. That's just my take on it.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, we ask, uh, we ask employees that time to time to come into our meetings, especially committees of whole meetings. And, uh, we ask not only uh, our employees, but we ask, uh, representatives from different boards and different, uh, organizations to come here. And even once in great while an out of towner. So you take an out of towner that's gonna come here, uh, for a five thirty meeting, they could be not getting home until very late at night. Uh, uh, some of these, some of these committees, uh, I don't know. You know, like, like the lady from the Assessment Center, Dr. Common, uh, you got some Tawas people coming over for, what, mental health or public health or something like that? What, what disservice are we doing? Some people work early, some people work late. You know, we have, we provide. Uh, we provide for both.
I don't, I don't disagree. Um, but like, look at the Zoom. I mean, I think things have changed from when we decided to do this. Um, we have different technology, different availability. Uh, most of the department heads are, um, salary based versus hourly based. Um, I, I, and, and they have just as much input through there as they do. And things did change when I initially. We, we have an extra meeting a month. We have four meetings per month now. Um, and, and some of them are pretty lengthy. Um.
Well, we don't, we, we don't care why an out of towner comes in on Zoom instead of in person, I guess, you know, that.
I. Commissioner Mayhew, do you have an, what's your opinion?
I want to just be a lot easier in the evenings is all I can say. I've noticed that we get the same people. If they care enough to come, they don't care what time it is, they'll be here. That's my take on it.
Go ahead.
And there is, there is Zoom now that we've never had before. And we can do it here and we can do it in the Commissioners' chambers. We have it both places. So if they wanted to listen to us in the evening, they could sit back with a cup of coffee, turn it on Zoom and listen to us. And they can also talk to us if they want to. On Zoom.
Yeah.
So my next question, then the question that arises, then can we, do we go back to the Commissioner Chambers then? For meetings? Because the courts will be slowest. The courts will, that was our problem. That's why we came here, is because the courts, we couldn't shut off the air handling system because of the courts. The courts are not a session at five thirty in the afternoon. Do we meet here or do we meet over there?
Good point.
Of course. Do you want to turn the heat out for a couple hours in the winter time? I don't know.
Think we'll be okay.
I think we'll be okay too.
Well, I mean, I don't mind coming here. I don't mind coming here at all.
No, I don't either.
It's conducive to the audience. But then again.
Good point.
But then do we have security on?
You gotta pay for a whole day.
No.
We don't have them here, so.
Well, I'm just posing the question. I'm not making the decision.
Right.
I'm just posing the question.
You would have to pay a whole day instead of a half a day.
Well, if you have.
Person.
If you have.
Security, yeah.
I had asked to start the meeting versus nine at eight, eight, eight o'clock as well, just to, I mean, by the time nine o'clock and we have a two hour meeting, it's, our day's half over. Um, and that wasn't an option on the floor, so I I know it's easiest for me. Again, I, I, you're right. I did sign up for this. I do know what it is. I, I've been doing it now for quite some time, but, but we have some different availability now. And I, and I have to agree with Commissioner Mayhew. I, I don't think the time has really showed a factor as far as who shows up and who doesn't. Um. I. That's my own take. Tim, do you have anything to add to this?
I'd just point out, we are, just like today, our OPA committee meets on one of those Thursdays at five o'clock, but, um, on the agenda tonight is that meeting scheduled. They could, first, I'm concerned in it, which is as easily meet on a Tuesday or a Wednesday night as opposed to Thursday, but that's, that's the only conflict I think that.
Do you have any opinion on these, your evening versus?
I, I don't. Whatever time you choose, I'll be here.
I'm completely against all four Thursday nights. As a department head. But it's your guys' meetings. We just have to be here.
Is there a reason? I mean, everybody had a reason for their comments, why you want it morning and not night.
It just works better with our schedule for work.
Is there an option that we could discuss, but eight o'clock start on the mornings?
I, I, I had asked that and that wasn't on the table. Um, I, I the earlier the better. I mean, I, I, as far as the morning, morning meetings. For me, it's, it's less, uh, interrupted to my day. I, I think some of times these nine o'clock meetings are somewhat rushed because I do have other responsibilities.
Yeah, we don't want to be rushed.
When we, no, no, you know, a lot of these are important meetings and I, I do feel like in the evening meetings, we are a little bit more laxed. Um, all around. You got department heads who that are in the middle of their morning or, or things scheduled and um, I think some morning meetings are a little rushed. And that, that could be on, partly on me as well.
Or can you, can you zoom in? Take minutes? Just asking. I don't know. Do you have capability to do that?
I have the capability, but if I'm gonna zoom in, I'm gonna be here.
Okay, alright.
But that is an option.
Just ask them.
Earl, I like the eight AM idea.
Eight AM help any on the people that would like.
Eight AM help you at all?
Me, I'll be here whatever they, we decide, but.
We're asking.
I know, but I'm up at five.
So eight AM works.
I, I agree. The, the evening meals, the evening, the evening meetings work best. And I can't remember what it was when we first started. Um, I don't, the, the only, the only committee, um, and I think as a whole, all of my other committees meet in the evening. I guess your guys' budget's Friday morning, isn't it? That's tomorrow morning.
Yep.
Um, all my other ones are in, are evening ones. So, uh, I guess you guys' thoughts. I guess we might as well, this is a, right now we have on the motion to approve the schedule as is.
Can we change it? The, the time? Would this, would that be conducive to everybody? We changed the time to earlier?
I'm fine with eight AM.
Right?
That helps and.
I don't care.
Would you rather have an evening or an AM? Even make it.
I have, I will have a rather.
But even make it five.
In the morning?
Eight AM?
Yeah, yeah.
No.
If I, yeah, versus five thirty, if that's more.
No, I don't have a rather, oh.
You have a preference then?
No.
Do you want to do it?
As if, I mean, if, if there's any preference at all, as is, is fine with me, but that's just, just opinion. That's it. That's all. That's all.
What's, what's splitting the difference between eight, nine, like eight thirty be better? Or is that enough time for you?
Oh, I, I, again, I just feel like the morning meetings are rushed. On all levels, not just on mine. I bid, I might not, because I'm further away now. I don't start till noon, but which helped, but that's a half a day I have to. So some things have changed in my life.
Um. Well, I'll give you an extra hour, Tim.
We have a motion on the table right now. Would you like to do anything with that motion? Want to vote on it?
Well, it seems like you're ready to give.
Change it any way you want.
I know. It seems like everybody would be all right with eight o'clock. You okay with eight o'clock? Okay, I'm in the motion to zero eight hundred in the morning for morning meetings then.
So you have to, then you will have a motion on the floor right now. You have to do something with that one.
Yeah. Can I just move the motion?
Motion. Motion to amend, uh.
I already did that. I just did that.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
I'll support that. So we have a motion to amend the original motion for our meeting schedule. So our morning meetings will be at eight AM and our evening meetings will be at five thirty.
Funny.
We can always reevaluate this.
Yes.
Correct.
Anytime, any week you want, yeah.
This doesn't work.
We'll try this, see what works.
Okay, roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
No.
Charles Wiltie. Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
I better change all these times now.
Oh, yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item B, Resolution to Appoint Calendar Year Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Twenty Four Standing Committee Members.
Thankfully interrupt, um, you voted on the amended or the amendment to the, uh, original motion. Now you need a, a motion to adopt the resolution with the amendment.
Oh, okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
You have to take a roll call on that.
That's your call. You can only.
Yeah, go ahead, take a roll.
Or not.
Uh, Charles Wiltie.
Oh, yes.
Brenda Simmons, yep. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Mm-hmm.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Resolution to appoint calendar year twenty twenty-four's meeting members.
I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution.
We want to Commissioner Wiltie.
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries item eight C, Resolution to Appoint Calendar Year Twenty Twenty Four Liaisons to various board, boards and commissions.
I'll make a mo- motion that we approve this resolution.
Support.
Motion Commissioner Wiltie, support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item nine, Claims. Claims total was eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and forty cents. Who are new claims?
Greg and I did claims.
Go ahead, head the floor.
Did you see anything, Craig?
No, it's very small.
It was very small.
Very little reported in, in the, in that last, uh, week of the year. I mean, it's, you know, eighty-six thousand dollars. I mean, that's
Yeah, pretty.
the lowest I've ever seen it. So I'll make a motion to.
I'll second.
Already.
Yeah, the motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner, um, Simmons. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item ten, Unfinished Business. Item eleven, Administrator slash Commissioner for.
Yeah, one thing that in the report that's uploaded, um, followed up yesterday, uh, with a call from Isabella County. They will be here at the February first committee, the whole meeting. I will inform them at the new time. But they want to talk to you about the material management plan, uh, that they're proposing on the regional basis. Uh, they will be sending their director of their material recycling facility, their community development director and the county commissioner, who are the lead team for the project out of Isabella. They will be able to explain, uh, what their role is as a material, uh, processing facility and talk about some of the grant money they've received to upgrade that facility. And then, uh, talk about just exactly how this would work logistically. Uh, all of the recyclable side of this county would end up at their facility for processing. So, you know, how would that get there? Uh, you know, what's the kind of, uh, infrastructure are they proposing? Uh, this is all part of that, um, uh, program that the state has opened up. In fact, they passed a, a law late last year about, um, uh, all the, uh, material recovery that they want to see happen throughout the state. They are going to, as I mentioned before, allocate sixty thousand dollars per county, but add additional funding when counties collaborate. So if they do get their twelve county, uh, uh, region up and running, uh, roughly ten thousand dollars per county, and that's a significant amount more than what any of us would otherwise receive. So that'll be happening. We also will have, um, depending on, uh, bids that we receive tomorrow, uh, potentially have the, uh, presentation for the jail medical as well. And that's going to be a pivotal issue for us, very important. Um, anticipating at least two, possibly three proposals, but we won't know until, uh, eleven o'clock tomorrow what we have. At your, maybe the whole meeting next week, that's, uh, according to the amendment we made to the purchasing policy. That's when we'll officially open proposals. Uh, so you'll have them likely on your iPads, uh, ready to go, um, or I can print them off, however you want to do that logistically, but that's when technically they'll be opened. Uh, and then we can talk from there about, uh, what we want to do as far as next steps. We had our department head meeting, uh, this week and, uh, steal a little thunder from Jeff Nichols. He pointed out, we are not exactly in compliance with flag etiquette. The flag is supposed to be in this corner, so I'll be scratching my head here to try to figure out how we can get ourselves into compliance. Uh, it may be that we close this door, which is fine. The other door is open. Uh, but yeah, I'll maybe even work with Jeff, maybe have some ideas on how we might be able to make that work.
Can we put it in a different corner?
It's supposed to be on the left corner. As you're looking at.
We look at the flag there, it'd be over there.
And the.
Left corner.
When it's behind the board, it was over there. It has to be behind the board.
It should be where it's supposed to be. Plain and simple.
We'll figure it out. If put a closed, I don't know, I'm signing with you, Tim. Closed door. Do not, well, for meeting.
Yeah.
We just put.
Temporary sign.
We have it where it needs.
Yep.
Go with a smaller flag. It's a little in the corner above the door.
Go. Tim will figure it out.
Yeah, well, I'll get with Jeff and we'll make sure we got it right.
Okay.
Um, one thing I wanted to point out in the written report, uh, starts on the bottom of the first page and continues on the bottom of the second page. And, you know, credit Commissioner Wiltie with the idea. Uh, we've talked about, since we were talking about budget last year, about the, uh, revenue stream on civil infractions and how far that's fallen. Uh, Commissioner Wiltie asked the question as well, okay, we know what the revenue has done, but what about the actual tickets? Uh, have they fallen, uh, in, in, in sync? And the answer is, in, in effect, they have. We, um, actually were on a per ticket basis, uh, bringing in a little bit more as the, uh, number fell, but we are now at a point where both the revenue stream and the number of tickets seem to have matched. So this is a, a really good idea on how to, you know, again, evaluate what we're doing. Uh, we are indeed writing far fewer tickets, as you could see. In fact, the tickets themselves fell, uh, roughly seventy-nine percent. While revenue fell seventy-five percent during that period.
You know what that, I, I'm sorry. Do you know what that actual number? I'm looking at this, this as well. And I was gonna actually, when you were done with your report, I was gonna ask you to, to really dive into this, because I, for one, I greatly appreciate this. Um, but do you actually know what that number is versus a percentage?
I do. Uh, so we had a high point in twenty nineteen on the total number of tickets written, and that was nine thousand forty-two.
We did.
Compared to twenty twenty-three, we were down to one thousand nine oh seven. And that wasn't even the low point. Uh, twenty-one, I believe it was, we were just over sixteen hundred tickets. So we've actually recovered a little bit since the road patrol, uh, program has been put in place, roughly three hundred more tickets.
Um, that's a twenty-four hour patrol. Since twenty twenty-one, right?
Right.
Wow.
Yeah. Uh, so interesting stat and, you know, again, appreciate the, the idea, uh, being presented and it's, uh, you know, data both, uh, through the general ledger and the court, we were able to do that comparison. So just interesting, uh, little, little fact.
Did you guys have this information before your law, uh, enforcement meeting? Okay.
Hmm, you're right from that. Um, you asked a lot about that.
I read the report. I read your guys' minutes there.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I had some questions about your reporter. I was waiting for you to.
Okay.
Um, it, was anybody at this meeting that, uh, it says a meeting was scheduled January sixteenth to address four grievances filed by the Teamsters Corrections Unit. A written deposition will be prepared and issued on or before January twenty-third. Was there a commissioner present at that?
It hasn't happened yet. It's gonna happen on Tuesday and the commissioner will be present.
Yeah, look at the date. January.
Totally me. Okay, so where?
I, I will be there because I said on the liaison.
But I thought we had agreed upon. So I apologize. I did read that and I thought, oh my gosh. So you're, this was put in here because you're preparing for this?
Preparing for it. Uh, the date hadn't been set yet. In fact, we had a date set and then it was changed. So everybody's up to date on the current, uh, situation.
And can you, uh, I guess, explain a little more? You have the insurance rates on there. I, I didn't really understand. Uh, Teamsters Welfare Fund.
Okay, so each year, um, the Teamster Welfare Fund sends us the, um, uh, the, uh, for, for policies on health insurance. And we only have our court unit now that's on the Teamster Welfare Plan. And historically, and this year was no different. We've had trouble getting those numbers from them. In fact, we didn't get them until we, the day we were doing payroll before we, actually were able to confirm what the numbers were. So the way, uh, the Teamster Group establishes what their contribution is, we, we decided through PA one fifty-two that the hard cap formula is, uh, what will be applied. But unique to this group is that they take everybody, regardless if you're a single person, a two-person or a family. Uh, figure out what that cost is gonna be, apply the hard cap to that total cost and then split the difference between all employees. So you may have a person that's a single subscriber that's going to be paying in the same amount as somebody with a family group. So that's spread across the entire, uh, group. And this year, their monthly contribution, uh, will be three hundred sixty-four dollars, sixty-six cents. That works out to one hundred eighty-two dollars, thirty-three cents per payroll, a twenty-two percent increase over what, uh, twenty-three rates were. Uh, we have, by contrast, we have, uh, fifteen Mesa plans now. If you calculate them based on what the plan is, and then the single two-person in the family plan. Uh, of those, only four require any contribution at all. And the highest one, and it's the Mesa Choices Plan, is one hundred twenty-seven ninety-seven per month, or roughly sixty-three ninety-nine per page. You can see a definitely, uh, difference there. Um. The coverages are, are roughly the same. There are a few additional things that the Teamster Welfare Fund includes, including, uh, health, I'm sorry, uh, life insurance program and a few others. Uh, but it's, it's just an interesting comparison between the two rates. And so this has actually been applied since the first, um, paper, and I think it was today's payroll. I think it's the first, uh, one that this has been applied to.
Okay. And then I, you, you go into what the department heads meeting, um, anticipation of, of the weather. Department heads were encouraged to review the suspension of operations policy with employees. Can you, can you remind us all what that is?
Right, well, if they, and then I'll use the example from a year or two ago when we had an ice storm. Uh, and that was definitely a situation where it was not, um, safe for our employees to be on the road. So what'll happen is early in the morning, the chair and I'll have a conversation and discuss the conditions and should we remain open or not. Uh, if we, uh, come to the conclusion that we need to suspend operations, I immediately contact the court, so they're aware as well. Uh, I have never had pushback from the court. The, the weather is the same for courts as it is for us, so they generally are in agreement. Uh, we then, um, broadcast as soon as we can, um, by email, but also through, uh, cellphone. We're able to send out text messages through a system that Tommy Spencer has set up for us now. Uh, we do that text blast to let everybody know we're suspending operations for the day. When that occurs, anybody who's not, uh, you know, vital twenty-four seven operation like our patrol officers, that's then counted as administrative day off. So nobody's vacation or sick banks are impacted by this. Uh, but those who have to work or are scheduled to work the twenty-four seven, and that's primarily our jail and our law enforcement. Uh, there's no change for them. Those schedules will continue. There's no premium pay involved. Uh, it's just, uh, again, part of the, uh, job that, that they've signed on for. And that's generally it. Now, um, I do encourage department heads to, if they have a phone tree or something like that with their employees, to go ahead and activate those too. We've learned that sometimes the text messages aren't transmitted immediately. We've had trouble with one carrier in particular. Uh, but the system we're using now is much improved. Uh, the system we were using before, we were able to send text messages by email. And sometimes if we were to issue those at seven in the morning, the employees might get them at three in the afternoon, and it just didn't work out real well. And sometimes if we were to issue those at seven in the morning, the employees might get them at three in the afternoon, and that just didn't work out real well for us. Um, we do have the ability to, to contact uh, local media if uh, needed, uh, to make sure that they know that we're closed as well. Uh, so it's just uh, an all-out effort as soon as that decision is made to make sure everybody is made aware. And. Hopefully we don't get too many.
Commissioner Santos?
Yeah, uh, some of the schools, when they have day off, they just make the phone call and it goes to all, all the personnel that work, work there. Would that be feasible here or no?
I don't know. That'd be a IT question.
Pretty well, it'd be pretty well, uh, I think we called up, was it twice last year for the ice?
I think it was.
Yeah, and I have contact with the night, um. I mean, I haven't as of yet this year, but I'm sure we will, with the night uh, road commission, there's a gentleman that works nights, um. So last year, when we were in question a couple of times, I, I did have communication with him as far as how the roads were. So it's worked pretty well with what's, I believe.
Would we have it now?
Yeah, I think.
Uh, is any, any, what do you think? We can notify people, and particularly if it's like one call or something, then it's all in favor of doing it.
Any questions for? I, and this report was very good.
Fight Club I belong to, we, we got call multiplier dot com or something, and so the text message. Just type it out and I can send it immediately. I know that forty-five people get it within and out. But it, you know, it costs seventy-five dollars a, a year, I think it is, by cent.
I think, and I stand to be corrected by Tom, I think the system we're using right now is somehow connected with nine-one-one. It's broadcast through that program.
You have any questions? Item twelve, elected officials and department head reports, DHS budget report.
This, they just submit uh, periodically to us and um. You know, this is just the status of where they are right now with their county allocation.
You don't have to do anything with this, do we? Anything else, guys? Elected officials and department head reports.
Clerk?
Uh. Brett Gildner, you're Ogumah County clerk. Um, we, Tracy got the W twos done. You guys already saved yours. Um, employees will be getting theirs. Uh, today. Um, ballots were delivered yesterday, so we are. Almost ready for the February, nine days early. We got all of our equipment. I am going to be testing that. Um, today, maybe tomorrow. Um, just to make sure that all that stuff is good to go. We received notice, well, I did this morning in my email, West Branch Row City Schools filed their um. May election. Uh, to be put on the ballot, so. That is for sure a go now. Um, we're just, oh, our new hire, Janine, if you guys haven't been in, um, she's been here a week. She is doing great, um, catching on, uh, not overwhelmed. Things are looking up for us. We're doing good, moving forward. Um, that's all I got.
Any other elected officials departments? MSU, you're here. Hi.
Good morning. Julie Darden, District Board Director, MSU Extension. Um, I didn't have anything planned, but then I remembered that last week. Uh, Commissioner Scott asked me why I didn't speak at the meeting, because I just sat in and listened. Uh, so I prepared something. Yeah, well, I'm like, you know, I, I had a chance to talk to the county attorney about another matter, and he's like, you're really passionate about your job. And I was like, well, I'm glad that comes through. I really love my work. Um, one thing to let you all know is, um, we've been having strategic directions, listening sessions across the state. Um, look, inviting stakeholders and staff to join uh, uh, groups where um, there's a guided uh, facilitated conversation to get input from the local. From local stakeholders. It really matters to us that our programs are responsive and relevant to the people that live in our communities. And so to that effort, uh, there were ten listening sessions that were done all over the state. Um, the closest ones to here were Grayling, and then there was one in Frankenmuth, but because it's winter time, um, they have uh, created two opportunities to have a virtual listening session. Um, and those are next week, so Tuesday, January sixteenth, in the evening from six-thirty to eight PM. And then Thursday, January eighteenth, um, from eleven-thirty AM to one PM. We do ask that people register in advance, just so we. Have an idea of how many people will be attending those meetings, but that would be happening via Zoom. Um, and we have a lot of um, skilled facilitators who are part of that team, who will be guiding discussion. Um, and, and gathering information from the public that will inform the ways in which we do our work going forward. Um, and so this is something that we're, we've typically done um, every five to seven years for extension. And we, we're just continuing to do that process where we're asking stakeholders to help us to understand how we can better serve the public with the information that we have. So um, a lot of the materials are saying make your voice heard. It absolutely is open to everyone. So I want to specifically invite anyone who is listening um, to, to join that effort. Uh, January, beginning of the year is a time when we do a lot of planning and we're engaging with the public and doing a lot of planning. So we have a number of trainings around uh, gardening. Um, we are also he- helping people, um. We're continuing to help people with soil testing, so um, you know, this might not be the perfect time to test your soil. But we're ready for the spring when uh, people will be testing their soil. Um, it's recommended, um, if you're interested in gardening or um. Uh, you know, um, improving your lawn, that, that soil testing is done every three years. And so you can buy, um, for the home gardener, you can buy a self uh, test mailer, which allows you to pay one price. And then the postage is included when you send that back. So that gets sent to a laboratory and then the results. Um, come from MSU that'll tell you if you need more of a certain nutrient to improve the soil uh, in your home garden. Uh, for farmers, we have a, a little bit of a different process, but it's still, you still get recommendations. Um, but because of the diversity of Michigan agriculture, uh, we do ask some really specific questions about what farmers are growing. So that we make sure that the recommendations are tailored specifically to those things that people are growing. Um, we're doing a lot of planning um, in this time, so we're planning for exploration days, which is an opportunity for youth to come to campus. Um, at Michigan State and experience learning opportunities that are specifically designed for them. They're gonna be hands-on. Um, it's a three-day opportunity for youth to visit a campus, to kind of understand what it looks like um, on a college campus. And how to navigate getting around. Um, and it's a lot of fun. Um, so we put a lot of effort into that. And in February, we have a four-H celebration day at the Breslin Center. Um, it's an opportunity for uh, four-H youth, uh, volunteers, staff, supporters and partners, uh, all of you qualify in that category. To attend a Michigan State Women's Basketball game for free. Um, that date again is February twenty-fourth. Um, there's a two PM tip-off and uh, but doors open at twelve-thirty. So um, we do ask that people register online to get their tickets. Um, and if you, if individuals register before the fourth of February, those tickets will be mailed to you. Um, after that, you would pick your tickets up at will call. Um, and then uh, we have a lot of people uh, doing meetings around the state, sharing information and research that helps farmers. Um, we're also working closely with Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development on providing a space uh, for testing for the uh, pesticide use. Um, and core training. Um, that makes sure that people who are buying pesticides are using those things responsibly. There, there has to be a license to purchase some restricted-use pesticides. And Michigan State University provides the education, and Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development provides the testing. So we've been partnering with them. And also, beginning of the year is a time when a lot of people focus on reaching their goals. So we have all kinds of programs um, on financial health, on individual and personal health, um, across the lifespan. A couple of things to highlight, um, one is a, a program called Relax Alternatives to Anger, which helps people understand how they can. Manage their emotions in ways that are productive instead of, um, you know, having, and having an angry response initially. Um, in addition to that, we have programs like Tai Chi and Walk with Ease that are provided both in person and virtually. Uh, Walk with Ease is a new program designed um, in partnership with the Arthritis Foundation. That helps people understand how they can get started in a walking habit and a walking program, and maybe even start some walking groups in their community. Um, so they can be out and about and uh, improving their health. So if anyone has any questions about all of the things that I shared with you and many more, please let me know. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Julie.
Uh, any other department heads or elected officials on the phone?
Uh, good morning. This is Jeff Nichols, Veterans Office. Just one update, we had, uh, I have a resignation that was submitted by Larry Boyce. Uh, so we're gonna have a, we're gonna be advertising for two openings this year. Uh, one actual opening, because Larry, Larry won't be eligible to uh, be on the committee anymore as of May first. And then uh, Mark's already requested renomination to the uh, Veterans Committee. And that's it.
Nice question.
Go ahead.
Jeff, uh, we talked earlier about flag etiquette. Can the flag be centered in the room, right behind the chairman?
I, I, I understand, we, I mean, most people understand why you have it over there because of the door.
Yeah.
Generally, it's supposed to be to the viewer's left or to the speaker's right, so I mean, if it was. I, I. Center would probably be okay. I, I'd have to look that one up, but. Uh, generally, it's always off to your, off to your right shoulder.
We need to get the flag where it belongs. We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Well, you just moved over a little bit with center right next to your right shoulder and just close the door during.
We have a door open at the end. We'll fix that, Jeff. I thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
Jeff, where can I take? Where can I take an old flag?
Bring it right to our office here or Sturnell's. They have a box outside their uh, building. Uh, I believe we have a box over at. Uh. The old Family Fair Place. I think it's Dunham's now.
Okay.
And uh, the Legion Office over in uh, Skidway Lake.
Okay, now come see you.
All right.
Sturnell's got a nice box there too. Take mine. Uh, any other elected officials, uh, treasurer?
Good morning. Karen Pickelowski, Ogumah County Treasurer. I just wanted to let the public know that on Tuesday, January sixteenth, we have a show cause hearing day. For taxpayers who are suffering hardship to come in and apply for an extended payment plan. And um, if they're available from nine to four, they can fill out an application. Please come and see our office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Any other elected officials or department heads? Matters on the floor, commissioners?
None.
Motion for adoption? Commissioners report, we got something a little different on here. Tim, did you wanna expand on this?
Oh, again, uh, informal conversation that I have with Commissioner Wiltsey. Uh, we take minutes for a lot of these meetings we're required to under Open Meetings Act, for instance, for the Parks Commission, Planning Commission and groups like that. You've set up a board rule that whenever one of your committees meet, uh, might not be formal minutes, but at least notes will be taken. And the discussion was, well, you know, we have the commissioner reports and that's all well and good, but we have these documents, we should share them with the board. So that's what you'll see happen from here on. So as these are, and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, turn them around relatively quick. Uh, but as you can see already, we've got Parks and Recreation is on here, Law Enforcement had a committee meeting, uh, the Opioid Committee minutes uh, from November are on here. Uh, they'll be meeting again tonight, so by your next board meeting, you'll see another set of minutes from that group. And if nothing else, it might prompt uh, an idea or two that maybe we've forgotten about in, in this session, not to worry about, you know. Having a list of things, you've got the notes right there and you can elaborate as you see fit.
The Budget Committee should be on here as well, minutes.
Will be, yes, and they'll meet tomorrow, and yeah, you'll see those next time.
I thought it was great. Um, I go to the city and West Branch meetings and their packet is seventy pages long. It's on there, and but, but a lot of it is, is, is minutes from different meetings. So they get to see it, and I looked at all these and I, I picked up stuff off, like the Transit Committee and the Opioid. Committee that I didn't sit on. I picked stuff up and I thought, hey, you know what? I think it's gonna be helpful for you guys, because you're gonna pick up things. Off the other meetings that I attend that we just don't talk about enough.
I looked over this stuff as well, and I'd like to take these one-on-one, because I have some questions. If, if, I guess, going forward and I see a, uh, break, but I wanted to go, I think we should take these individually and then go around to our, each commissioner like we've done in the past. But I think, address these individually and then. Go to our township meetings or, or other meetings, because I have some questions with review in these minutes. Did you have something, Brooke?
Yeah, um. It's, is it in these uh, rules or the, I'm supposed to have copies of these, of all of the committees in my office?
Yes. And you are the official keeper of all the records, so every, every border committee that this county has, minutes should be coming to you.
Um, I was getting someone, Kelly, because Kelly was sending them to me.
Right.
I haven't gotten any since she left and I.
We've only had one or two.
Literally, I know it just.
Transit and law enforcement since then, so.
Yeah. So shh. Who would be my contact? Would you be my contact for all of these?
For board, yes, but for like Planning Commission, that would be Ryan. If the Construction Board of Appeals ever needs to meet, Brian Stein would be that, uh, Jeff for the Veterans Board. So whatever department is assigned to the staff, that group should be your source.
Okay.
Are these? I guess they are. They are gonna be on the website. If they're in our packets, people are, do have access to these.
They will be. Um, I got some ideas on the website too. It would be nice, for instance, if we had a spot where people could click to read Parks.
Correct.
Material. Uh, so yeah, I mean, that's, it's one of those items that's, you know, eventually we'll get to it.
Okay, so let's look at uh, a November eighth, twenty twenty-three Parks and Rec Commission, Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Simmons.
Well, we've reported on both. Uh, these meetings and yet already, you know, last month.
You, you did.
I think it's just on here for our reading.
I had a question about it.
Oh, okay.
This would be about the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. There is, um, it goes into the High Bay. It looks like Xarbee Park was discussed, the nature park, the High Banks and new, the new business. But the High Banks was discussed. Um, and it talks about the four-one uh, C three for property. Um, it talks about the High Banks Committee to recommend ideas improvements. And then this will be a private committee, I guess, where, where are we with that?
Well, yesterday was a, I'll just do my commissioner report. Yesterday was a Parks and Rec. Committee meeting. Um, Danny Johnson was not able to attend because he was at the fire department, the night floor, probably the power outage and things like that. So we, we're really not, we really don't know. He is working with uh, with a couple of the other members on how to put together uh, the five oh one C three. So I think it's coming along, it's just uh, this month we weren't able to talk to him.
Good. Can I add to that too?
Go ahead.
Um, just because it's in, you know, in my township and you guys all know the importance that I feel the High Banks is to our area. Um, I've been speaking with Danny, you know, Danny's our new Parks and Rec member. And he wasn't able to be there yesterday, like Commissioner Scott said, but what the plan is, is combination of um. Of Bell, Bell's first name, I'm just, Scott Bell. And it'll be Bob Griffin, who have experience with these five oh one C threes, are gonna work with Danny to create the five oh one C three. And then once that's created, we're just gonna, what we'd like to do is we'd like to open up a big, general, you know, like a, a start-off meeting where. You know, we'll have it at, either be Millstown Township Hall or, you know, somewhere here at the, the county building. And invite anyone that wants to come in and listen to what we are trying to do. And at that point, we're gonna. Invite people who are interested to be on the, on the board for the High Banks, for the five oh one C three. Um, whether that be, I would imagine it'd probably be an application process, and we got a lot of that stuff to still figure out. But at that time, whether it be businesses, individuals, you know, there, we're just gonna have a big sit-down pow-wow on this, so we can get everything out there. And, you know, from there, we'll just kind of keep things moving forward. Uh, but that five oh one C three needs to be created first, and then that meeting will be scheduled after that.
It was just because we haven't heard any updates on that, so seeing that caught my eye, and I just wanted further explanation as far as where you guys were with that.
I think about a month ago or so, I, I gave an update, basically I had same exact update. I'm not sure, maybe you're wrong.
Oh, yeah, uh, Friends of the Deer Refuge is, is the five one C three for Nature Park, and it's working very well. And part of yesterday's meeting was, we voted to go ahead and put a roof on the hall up there and the, the five one C three will pay for the bill. Um, we uh, we did contribute, the five one did contribute some money toward a foundation. So it's locking up some of the money. It wasn't all of it. So there is some money we can go ahead and do this roof with it. Uh, of course, right now, you know, it's got a nice coating of white roof material on it right now, so. Of course, right now, you know, it's got a nice coating of white roof material on it right now. So I don't know exactly when that'll all happen, but, uh, we also just to give you a highlight, uh, uh, we have all the seasonal, uh, campers signed up for next year to drop, but there's a waiting list to get on. So two were filled in right away. Almost all of June is already reserved. Uh, Little League tournaments are coming back to town. So people are preserving, uh, spots. Um, you know, we just put the dumpster on, uh, twice a month. Uh, if, believe it or not, twice a month was a lot cheaper than just on call. So, um, everything's going pretty good. Our, uh, the deer being taken care of with nature park. Right now with winter, we're just got the gate closed. Um, uh, I also attended the city of West Branch and Foster Township this week. Uh, so, um, that's kind of my report this, this meeting.
The open committee meeting notes, was there any questions on that? I am concerned tonight with the roads and the weather. Um, I'm not sure how we do this, Tim. I, I'm the chairperson on there, but again, my, some circumstances have changed and I'm a little farther away. So like tonight, I'm probably gonna have to attend by Zoom. How, how do I go about, and, and maybe this isn't the time, maybe it's tonight, but how do I go about as far as requesting if, if Commissioner Wiltsey's, um, interested in being the chairperson as some of these meetings, I'm gonna have to attend by Zoom because of my location and the time currently.
Yeah. When we did the, uh, committee resolution earlier today, um, we can switch if you have concurrency, just switch the order of the names. So when Commissioner Wiltsey's name appears first, he's assumed to be the chair and then you would be, uh, vice chair of the meeting. Uh, so it's a pretty simple process.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
That's, that's, because again, five o'clock and maybe in farther away at work. Zoom's gonna be more, uh, compatible with me. So I'm still interested in it, but, uh, not quite as involved. So, um, December nineteenth Transit Committee meeting notes. Those were in there. Those were, any questions on those? And then there's a January fourth, twenty twenty-four Law Enforcement Committee meeting. I had some questions on that. That looked like that was a pretty lengthy, extensive meeting. Um, did you guys wanna? I appreciate the, uh, forwardness and some of the, uh, information that was gathered. Let me pull it up. You guys really hit some, uh, difficult subjects, it looks like.
Absolutely.
Um, does everybody want to, I'm trying to find it right here.
Is there, go ahead. Is there a particular thing that?
I, I guess you did.
Question about?
You did. It looks like there was a good attendance, but you guys talked about as far as charging inmates. Um, and it looks like the, the, um, according to this report, the judges were concerned about that. Did I read that correctly?
Yeah, basically where we, where we're from when the meeting on that topic is, um, Lieutenant, uh, Tom Howard over at the jail is going to talk to the courts to see if they can be the one to initiate the lodging fee. So it's right initiated through them. Um, and we asked that, you know, we keep that moving forward because it is an important topic. And Tom said that he was gonna be working on that. He had to leave the meeting early. Um, but he said that is what he was gonna work on. Correct him?
Right. He's, he was already engaged with the judges. It sounds like, um, they pretty much have agreement that they're gonna do that.
Right.
So it's, that, that should be like now should be in play.
That's for in-county, in-county inmates, correct?
Right. At least.
We already charged them. Okay. My other, what was this with the voucher for transport fees? I didn't understand that.
Well, that was, that was new news to us, but that's, they're looking at charging, charging for transportation too. Um, you go back to the, the room and board, uh, charge is basically what we're talking about on the other. This was brought up to Commissioner Wiltsey and I from the courts and a couple of months ago and, and then a month ago, we asked Lori Beck.
From Roscommon?
From Roscommon to come down and, and give us a clue on how they do, they charge twenty dollars a day for inmates. And they are, they do very well on collecting and they're very aggressive about it. And so we presented it to our staff and, and it seems now we're moving forward with it.
It looks like they were, they were concerned about it affecting the commissary fund.
That was, that was, uh, it's probably the biggest topic. Uh, yeah, and there's differences in opinions on that too.
Yeah. And I like getting that. So really, you know, we really, um, took a lot, learned a lot from Lori Beck coming over. That was great. But we couldn't really be apples for apples because yes, the sheriff and the sheriff were really concerned that the commissary fund would be affected negatively due to this lodging costs. But our main profit over there is e-cigarettes. For example, Roscommon, they don't even, they don't even offer e-cigarettes. So people who want e-cigarettes are still gonna buy e-cigarettes no matter what. Um, so we really felt that, you know, no, you know, we're not gonna accept the fact that we're not gonna do this because of the possibility of our commissary fund being affected. So, you know, we felt very, very, uh, strong that it was important to, to keep this moving forward. And it is good to see that. It sounds like the judges are agreeing in that lodging fees will be applied to our in-county residents.
And you guys also really went into compens, uh, compensatory, whoo, overtime issues and compensatory time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we addressed some of that. Their, their union contract is a little different than a couple of other contracts in the county. They can bank higher up, uh, hours. Uh, we asked why even some, uh, hours were being banked. Um, they told us that, that, that they employ because of the contract has the option to take it in overtime that week or take it in comp time.
And that is what the, what the contract states?
Yeah, it does. And they can, and police and corrections, corrections and deputies can, can bank up to forty-eight hours now. And comp time is paid up. Comp time is earned as overtime. But when it's paid out, it's paid out at regular time. So when you take an hour of comp time, it equates to an hour and a half of regular time and paid out. So say, say you take a comp hour every day in a week, that, that ends up being seven and a half hours of pay. Um, when paid out. So, um, like, uh,
It doesn't show up as overtime.
And it doesn't show up as overtime. And I would like it to be recorded as overtime myself. So you can see that. Uh, but presently we, we don't do that. And so one of the things that we got in there about school resource officer, he collects an extra hour a day in comp time. So snow day comes, uh, deer season, the opening day of deer season, the school is closed. He took comp day. It's legal within his contract to do so and everything else, but he doesn't have to touch any paid time off day.
Right.
So he has been taking a, a, a day, a, a hour of comp every day for the whole school year. And did last year. And that equates out to like five weeks of paid time off without touching your paid time off. So snow day comes, last year he took it off. In-service day came, he took it off on comp time. My thing with the sheriff is you keep saying you want officers on the road. We have a snow event. Don't you want more officers on the road? Because you have a dangerous snow event? But yet, but in community contract also says that they can't automatically take it. They have to take it with permission. So the sheriff has to give permission to take that day off. They can't just say, hey, I got a comp, comp time. Correct?
Tim, that's true with the earnings side as well. It has to be done with authorization of the sheriff in this case. So it's not just the employee deciding that. Now, I, I will say this though, in terms of the option, this is also something that's in the, the National Fair Labor Standards Act. So the scheduling of it really is where, where the linchpin is as to whether or not we get comp time and overtime. You know, it comes down to the supervisor. In this case, obviously the sheriff saying, yes, you can work these extra hours.
And yes, you can collect them on the days that I permit you to.
Right.
We're gonna get a better breakdown of that in the next, many of the.
I have gotten some very detailed information here in the last couple of weeks that is illuminating. So yes.
Um, also, I'm sorry, I have one more thing. Do you want to go ahead?
No, I've got a different topic. Same, same.
I see the time clocks you guys hit on. Um, I appreciate that. It looked like you guys were looking for a little bit of feedback on that.
Yep.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Were you guys satisfied with the rationale behind it? I, I read it?
No.
Nope.
Personally, no.
Okay, that's.
I can say that.
I read it. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I gotta say that as compared to meetings that we tried to have law enforcement committee meetings a few years ago. And, and I gotta, I, I will say that they were domineered by the, by the sheriff's department. It's the other way around. We're, we're, we're getting feedback both ways now.
Yeah. And I'd just like to add to that. We just feel it's very, very important. I mean, obviously between the sheriff department and the correction department is a large budget, a large, you know, portion of our county budget. Therefore, the law enforcement meetings are very important. You know, we need to be consistent with these. We need to get more of the stakeholders involved. And that's what we're asking for. I mean, you know, our, our job is to look at these numbers financially. You know, if we have a budget, if we can save money and not spend everything in the budget, that's perfect situation. And when we look at these numbers and some things are alarming to us, we're not doing our job if we're not asking questions. And we need to do that with all, all entities of, of the county. But this is an entity that costs a lot of money. So we have to look at these things. We have to ask these questions and, you know, find out the answers, why, why we're doing this and why we're not doing it. And, um, you know, some, some changes need to be made. I think it was a great meeting last Thursday. I think it opened a lot of, uh, communication on some certain things. And, and the bottom line is, is we're just gonna be steady, firm, and we're gonna be consistent with meeting every month, looking at items that cost us, cost our county taxpayers money. And we need to figure out, just like I keep saying on every facet of this county, how are we gonna run, run this county at a means where we give our people, our citizens, our constituents, the best possible service we can. But we operate at a level where we can create sustainability, where we can create a fund balance. And that's what we're doing right now. These hard decisions that we had to make, make in December is the start of that. Now we just need to be consistent. And we need to stay steady with our actions to continue to figure out what that level is. Where can we run the county at a level where we're given the best we possibly can, but yet also we're creating sustainability for the future.
Commissioner Snacks?
One thing I don't, don't understand in some of the minutes is where, uh, uh, West Branch Township, um, requested a contracted deputy assigned to the township is, is.
West Branch Township has been talking about, uh, having an officer in their township. And I talked to Jim Morris, the supervisor, and they were looking at hiring a, an officer to, to patrol, probably by a car and old shot, you know? And when I talked to Jim, uh, this is only like tax time, when I went and took my taxes in, I talked with him and he says that he'd been in communication with the sheriff. And, uh, so then when I went to this meeting, I brought it up. And that's when the sheriff and the undersheriff said that they'd been talking to Jim about the possibility of, of renting a, uh, contracting a deputy. Just like Mills Township did back a few years ago. You remember that? And there is no particulars worked out yet. But, uh, uh, as I told the sheriff, don't forget that any money that gets talked about with, with the commissioners, uh, costs and things like that, what we charge. Just like the school resource officer, that's worked out okay, except now when, when we pay this extra comp hour though, or, uh, for the deputies, so now the school is getting billed for any time over forty hours. Cause that's what our contract with both schools are, is forty hours. If that officer's spending, uh, more than eight hours a day, which he is, because he's getting a comp hour every day. Um, now the school is gonna get billed for that overtime. And, uh, a billing just went out. I think it will today or tomorrow go out.
It's, it's gone already. You didn't have an email.
Yeah. So, um, this is the first time we've had this contract for almost two years now. Uh, so that's both schools have gotten overtime. So we, we're billing both schools' systems for it. Um, the West Branch Township thing could be the same thing. They'll pay for an officer and we can get another officer on the street, you know? Now, much like the school resource officer, if he had to leave because of a major emergency in the county, they can't. It provides us with another officer paid for by somebody else. Um, same with, if you look there, the road commission's looking for a seasonal part-time person to perform weight master duties. Our thing at, at the committee level is saying it's fine as long as somebody else is paying the bill. Then we can put more people on, but right now we're not putting no more people on, on the budget that we got. You know, so, uh, we're all for it. We're hoping that the sheriff, of course, the sheriff, being elected officials in the year or day, any, any one of these programs, you know?
I'd like to add to that though. They were various, um, receptive to the possibility of the West Branch Township. Um, police officer, of course, it would be no cost to the county. It would put another deputy on the street, um, which would be good. Lot of visibility, a lot of traffic, a lot of people up there, up on the hill. Um, and I think it'd be a great deal. And the sheriff and the undersheriff were both, uh, very subject to it. And I know they're going to be continuing to work on that. So.
Let's start. Oh, go ahead.
Do we, do we have the personnel now to, to do that or do we have to hire?
Well.
It'd have to be a hire.
It'd have to be a hire if we're gonna concentrate them in the, in the, in the one township for the whole shift.
Just like that.
You know, or you just have to take the service off the rest of the county. Right now we have enough deputies to cover two deputies per shift and four shifts in a week. Two, there's two A, A B in the day and A B at night to cover seven days.
Right now it's just beginning conversations.
Yeah.
So there'll be more to come on it.
It would take a new hire though.
Yeah, I agree.
So another township would ask for it, would take another hire.
It could.
Then what happens? All of a sudden they don't want these people anymore.
Well, then you, the funding quits and you'd have to lay them off. I mean.
That would be the township's.
You're familiar with the school system. Same way if there's funding comes down the line for an extra teacher, they'll hire an extra teacher. When the funding runs out, you give papers to the teacher, right? I mean, that's what it is. Yeah. If the funding isn't there, the county can't afford to keep them on.
Regular committee reports. Did you, did you go anyplace in the past?
Yeah, township meetings. Uh, I didn't, uh, my new calendar, I was, I evidently left one meeting off of it. Um, cause I wasn't there yesterday. I don't have it on my calendar either. Um, yeah, we're like. The, uh, especially at Horton Township Hall, they were talking about, um, how the, um, how they assess property taxes now. The laws have changed significantly to what they used to be. So things that I thought were the same have changed considerably about what you pay property taxes on. Um, that, that I didn't, that hadn't, was not aware of. So don't be surprised if something goes down and you're paying property taxes on, you know, something you never paid before. And they were talking about, um, another thing is that the, um, West Branch Township, uh, cannot collect millers, um, for the DDA. Uh, so that means that the millers for the library is gonna go to the library. There was a problem with, with money for the library, the DDAs. Kept, kept the money that supposedly they were entitled to, but it went, went through the legal vehicle system and came up with, they cannot collect that money anymore. It goes. Came up with they cannot collect that money anymore. It goes to the library. So that was a big. And they were talking about the red flag laws too that uh are coming down. So somebody says, oh, I think Greg Scott's a danger to me. You come and take up your weapons. I'm not sure if that's exactly how.
I don't have any, don't worry.
No, but I mean, I've seen it kind of in progress and that's exactly how it works. They don't even notify you. They just walk and take everything and away they go. They bust the door in and that's how it works.
Are you talking about the extreme protection? Is that another name for it or is this something different?
Oh, I don't know. I call them red flag laws. That's what the newspaper called them too.
Okay.
So. But it's it's surprising how much uh what what they can do and they can just come in.
What committee was that that was discussed?
This is the red flag laws by the state.
I know that you just brought up. Where where were you?
To learn that.
What had you attended?
Township meeting.
Oh, this is real life situations, so.
I went to West Branch and they were talking about their officer. They had numbers and they wanna have it done in twelve months.
Well, yeah, good.
Uh the other thing there they want is something about the EMS response. Going around the loop and coming to them and this and that, and they're gonna talk to EMS and come up with a. New plan of getting to where they're going. I was at Rose Township and they're still having trouble with the fire department. There's two independent fire departments in the state. Loveton's one of them. And for township to be dealing with an individual, that's where they're having the problems. They got lawyers involved and they're having trouble with that. That's more like that for you.
Um I attended Hill. My there's there's a little my schedule because of uh New Year's was a Monday, not a Monday. And so that was two of my townships. Um so they got moved. So I just attended Hill Township. Um they talked a little bit about roads. They have some private roads and uh. They have an individual out there that's giving the road commission some problems about, and it's a private road, so the road commission voted to not. Do anything with that road any further. Um there's a couple of roads being talked about over um in that area. That was really the main topic there. The nine oh one meeting, um nine oh one is going great. They're fully staffed. There was no overtime. Um they do have a gonna be starting soon. Asaba Valley has an individual. They have a grant. Um they have an individual that's going to be just dedicated to mental health cause. Um which is in extreme need, emergency calls, mental health related. Uh they're gonna do this as kind of a pilot program um and see how that goes. That's there's gonna be more to come on that. Um went over their budget briefly. Their budget is in great shape. Um. That's really it there. I did not attend Logan. I had a wrestling meet, so.
Oh, did you win?
My son. Um yeah, so unfortunately, it hasn't been as active as I would like to be, but um my son's a senior this year, so I'm picking and choosing my uh. My time very wisely. Commissioner Scott.
Well, it kinda gave me a rundown because I attended a couple of township meetings, but the one. The one thing that's happening in the city and I reported this last month was they are gonna go with their own building departments and inspector. Uh they had to. Do a vote because of the law, do a like a small hearing and a vote. Two months and in a in in two months and in a row, in which they did this last Monday, so. Uh they will be interviewing soon here for an inspector. And uh they'll split away from the county. No, the city of West Branch. So I wouldn't doubt that we might even see a a township or something like that. I mean, West Branch Township is. Very close to even being a charter. If if they opted that way, they're they're at that tax base, I think. Uh pretty close. Uh so I it's hard to say, hard to say. Depends on how big you wanna be.
Just show them how independent, I guess.
So that means for um.
Building inspection, building permits. It'll be past just planning. They have their own planning and zoning now.
But it doesn't have anything to do with wells and septic, right?
Isn't that Health Department?
Yeah, that's Health Department.
That's Health Department. This would be building. Building, anything to do with building.
So like we have an electrical inspector and we have a.
Right, plumbing and eating inspector, and we have a building inspector.
Yeah.
And they will have that on their own.
And they have their own ordinances for all of that.
Yes, yes, they'll have to build their own ordinances and everything. If you're familiar with Plainfield Township. And I asked for that hail area, they have their own separate uh. Building department and and things like that. And they go on a contract basis. They don't hire. An employee like like we do. Aaronant County is on a on a contract basis too. And I believe that the. I think the uh inspectors get like eighty percent of the permit fees. And it's paid out like that. They're not employees. They don't have healthcare. They don't have vacation time. They're not. They're not a union employee. They are contractor. A lot of counties do it that way.
Commissioner Wiltzy?
Uh I got quite a bit of stuff. Uh Mills Township uh financially doing really strong. You have one point eight million dollars in the bank. Uh they just bought a new backhoe uh for fifty-five thousand dollars. The new hall is gonna continue to move forward. Been some pushback there with some of the um Mills Township residents, but uh the board feels very strong. The new hall is needed. Currently, the hall that they have there is old. They've had a bunch of electrical issues. I guess there's problems with the basement and there's. A mold issues and stuff, so so there is a a definite problem with the existing hall there. Um. We had some road work done in Mills Township towards the end of the year. They did some uh some pave overs. Uh some seal cracking that was starting to uh pull up. It was kinda done a little bit too late. So I contacted Pat at the road commission. And they're gonna look into all those issues um in the springtime because there was quite a bit of complaints on that. Um MSU extension, Julie was here today. We have a meeting this coming Monday via via Zoom uh for the MSU extension. EMS committee, I have a I'll have a meeting next Thursday. I am on the negotiations committee with another board member, Jeremy Card from Rose City. Uh that we are gonna be negotiation negotiating with the labor union regarding um currently, the EMS is still in full pension. Um sustainability wise, you know, it's it's not there. Uh we really need to get to a defined benefit program for our our new hires. It wouldn't change anything with the people that are already hired in. But uh we will start to have this conversation because it's. In my eyes and and the other board members, it's something that needs to happen. You know, you don't see a lot of immediate financial improvements, but down the road. Uh sustainability wise is the most important part. So we're gonna have those negotiations uh January twenty-fifth, the start of those. And again, have a EMS board meeting next week. Everything's running strong there. I've been working really, really hard on overtime. Overtime is an absolute monster, the EMS. Industry and we are really holding uh our new um director there uh very accountable for. Reports and information on the overtime there. And the new director is doing a fantastic job. Uh MSU, I already talked about that. EDC, I have a meeting next week um um for our board meeting there. Um you guys know when approved the first uh um. Funds that we did with our revolving fu- funds through the EDC and that's going really well. That business is open north of Rose City, so that that's a good. Good deal. Um again, meeting next week on that. Uh transit, I gave a report. Um at our last report on that, we have an upcoming meeting there. Construction, of course, is gonna is a little stalled with this weather for our um our cold storage building, but it is moving forward. Um we did have a new hire out there. Um everything's going well. Uh transit is moving forward. I know we've all talked about the uh looking into the assistant directors for there. Uh we do have a meeting next Thursday um for the transit board. Uh law enforcement, I think we pretty much went over that really in depth already. Uh road commission last week ended up being on the same day as our meeting. They had theirs on Thursday. Uh road commission is. Uh right now, extremely busy. I spoke with Pat yesterday, you know, with the snowfall, a lot of downed trees. So they've been extremely busy. Uh but I I feel our road commission does a very good job. Um and things are gonna get busier this upcoming snow. Uh you know, they're talking another big snow starting tomorrow. Um housing committee uh applications are in process. I know, Tim, you've you've received a few applications. I know I had requested that I would like to be on on that board uh once we get there, because I think we said we wanted to have at least. One commissioner on that, possibly two. But we are taking in, we have some applications already come in for that, so that's good.
Is that online? Is that on our website?
Yes.
Okay, I had somebody ask me.
Yeah, it's been on there, I think, for almost two weeks now. That's that's my report.
Is our business going into the ponderosa? I had a.
Yes, yes. It's gonna be a lucky steakhouse.
It is. It is going forward.
Yes.
Cause when I was on the EDC board, it was and then it wasn't and then, okay, so finally, go ahead.
Been confirmed they're gonna keep the existing shell of the of the building. If anybody was in there before, all the.
Yeah, okay.
All the area where the buffet was, it's gonna be kind of the a sh- a bar, like a core core shaped. Bar and then the kitchen is gonna kind of stay the same it was, of course, with a major extensive remodel, but that'll be a lucky steakhouse.
Good, okay.
That's good, very good.
Uh general public comment. Do you have anything, sir? Oh, my gosh, come on up. Thank you for for making your way here this morning.
Yep, doesn't matter what Chinese has had meetings. Then it was all Steve Foster Township. Um also on your planning zoning for Ogama. And yesterday we had a uh MSU meeting which you guys were invited on renewable energy. It was very informative. Um I don't have everything in front of me. But Ryan Veder has all the notes and statistics on it, and I think at some time we need to present that here. Because it's something of the future that's coming up. And it's probably gonna be very beneficial to not only the county, but the individual townships. Um it's gonna have some very lucrative amounts of money. They're gonna pay for megawatts. Based on acreage and such. A couple of different things that came up was. Them going through the state versus going through individual townships or counties. And the the big differences right now would short come to time. It would be like a hundred and twenty days to have approval. Versus going to the state, it could take years. So it's something that uh again, Ryan has all the notes on it. Um I don't wanna speak out of turn. But uh it was very informative and it sounds like it'd be something good that it's gonna happen and something we can get involved in and. Probably something in the county can make money out. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other uh public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone? Motion for adjourned? Motion. I will support that at ten twenty-three to adjourn. Anyone favor say yes? Oppose? Motion carries.
Like breakfast next Thursday.
Correct, eleven AM at the airport. Everybody be safe.